Lisa, I apologize. Can you do a sound check?
Hannah, can?
Hannah Ball, can you hear me?
This is Bonnie. I can hear you now.
Hey, we got Bonnie. Bob, can you hear me now? Bob Taunton?
I can hear you.
Okay. And Hannah, I assume you can hear me as well.
Thank you, guys. We can hear you now.
Okay, good. Alrighty. We will move on. Item F2 is a request for reconsideration of the approval of DSRFY 2023-10. For the members of the audience, the decision tonight will be whether or not to reconsider this. Tonight, it won't be reconsidered if the council chooses to do so. It'll be set for a date down the road, at some future date. So, council, initial decision for you is we had two requests for reconsideration on this application and we had a, I'll call it a rebuttal of those two requests by the applicant. Those were well-written and thorough. The question for the council is, do you want oral testimony from those three parties, or do you have enough information to make a decision based on the written materials that were supplied?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Personally speaking for myself, I would prefer a brief oral presentation from the parties.
Okay, any objection? Okay, that's the way we'll proceed. So, let's let's start with the Assistance League. Is there a representative for the Assistant League here? Okay. For those of you that didn't have an opportunity to look through the packet materials that are on the website, there was a written request for reconsideration from the Assistance League. That information's for your review online in the packet, and the council, of course, has had an opportunity to take that and review it. The other request, somebody's about to get up, I can see. Is that you?
I can help with the Assistance League if you'd like, but I'm also assuming next.
Yes. Yes, so we have some citizens that are represented. And forgive me, give me your name again. That's right, Kenley Grover. Okay, Mr. Grover. Council, I want to confirm everyone's and receive Mr. Grover's written comments. So if you'd like to emphasize any particular part of that.
First, I just want to make sure that everybody saw the original motion to reconsider, and then I believe there was an opposition filed to that, and then a reply was sent in the next day after that opposition was offered. I want to make sure everybody had a chance to see all three.
Mr. Mayor, just a point.
Yes.
Mayor, members of council, there was opposition and then there was a reply. The reply was outside the 14 days, and so I think just as a procedural matter, to council's point, the council should decide whether or not to consider his reply, because that was outside of the 14 days.
As a point of clarification, you say outside the 14 days. What do you mean by that? Because if I understand, we filed our motion to reconsider within the 14 days, and then after the 14 days lapsed, an opposition was filed to our motion to reconsider, and then the next day after that opposition was filed, we replied to that opposition.
Baron Castle, that's correct. So I guess that the issue is whether the council wants to consider the opposition and the reply to that. If the council does not, we also have an administrative rule that says try to get your stuff in within seven days. In this particular case, it probably could not have happened within the seven days. So I think this is a procedural matter. The council should decide whether or not to consider all four pieces of paper. And if not, they can read it into the record, I suppose.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I ask Mr. Grover a question that's related to this? Thank you, Mr. Grover, for your time today. In the material that I guess we don't have before us in the packet, the reply, call that the reply, is there information that you would not be presenting now?
I can present a copy of the reply to each of you. I have extra copies if everybody wants to have one. It's a only a few pages long, covering the more salient points of the opposition and our position in reply to that opposition.
And those points are different or the same?
Essentially, they're going to be very similar.
But, I mean, if there's a novel point, we should hear it.
I believe it just reinforces more of what was in the actual original filing in our motion to reconsider, and directly addresses some mid, our belief of misstatements regarding the application of law in the opposition. So addressing some of those key points that we feel were not correctly characterized in the opposition.
Council members?
So I'm open. I think if we're gonna allow that letter, we should just, to Charles, to Mr. Watson, allow all of the documents. Sure. You know, the opposition to the reconsideration as well as their documents. I think it's
Okay, I'd agree.
Yep. And my only I agree also. My only thing is, I want to, I want this to be procedural about whether or not we should rehear, not factual.
Correct. The for those of you that maybe not be picking up on what the discussion is here, this is not a merits hearing. The merits would be discussed if they decide to reconsider. But components of the merit is part of the reconsideration, because the reconsideration request points out errors, alleged errors in the decision. So, the council's job tonight is to decide whether that those, whether they believe the argument that there were errors is sufficient to cause a reconsideration. So, we want to keep it strictly to the issues of did the council err or not? And we'll have different points of view on that represented on the basis of what the council's just told, told us. So, with that, Mr. Grover, present your case for reconsideration of the decision.
Okay, just as a point of clarification before I jump in, are we considering the opposition as well as the reply? Or are we just considering the motion because it was the only document filed timely? Procedurally speaking, because I know Councilman Page wants to make sure that we're following the procedures. I want to make sure we're all starting off on the same page.
Well, the, if I understood the council just now, the council, I guess we can formalize it. Council has the right to receive what we're going to call procedurally, we're late, submittals, and receive those into the record for consideration on this decision tonight. And that would be four documents. An original from the Assistance League and the group you represent, Mr. Grover, Mr. Thomas's reply, and then your reply to his reply. And as far as I know, we don't have another reply to the reply to the reply. So, is that the council's understanding?
That's my understanding, sir.
Okay, let's formalize that, allowing those four documents I just mentioned to become part of the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question for the council before I jump in. I'm assuming you all had an opportunity to read the motion with its attached exhibits regarding our contentions on the factual issues that we feel were
Before we do that, can we let's make this motion?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we accept him to the record for documents referenced earlier by you.
Second that.
A motion and second, any discussion on the motion? If you're in all favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Motion carries.
All right. Back to my question. Have you all had an opportunity to read our motion to reconsider with its attachment regarding our contentions on the factual issues? Are there any questions I can address from the council before we jump into this?
For the audio, let the record reflect that the council nodded in the affirmative to your question. Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a question for Mr. Grover.
Okay.
Mr. Grover, your exhibit list that begins on page 39 ends on page 45 to support your request for reconsideration, it relies heavily on this elevating, kind of elevating the status of our Garden Cities Comprehensive Plan to that of Idaho Code. And I would, my question is, can you point to a statute that elevates the Comprehensive Plan to Idaho Code, codifies it?
Yes, I could. If you want to turn to the actual Comprehensive Plan itself, it states at the very top, Comprehensive Plan Elements Required by Local Law Land Use Planning Act, Section 676508, it's in parentheses, of the Idaho Code. So the actual Comprehensive Plan for Garden City cites Idaho Statute as the basis on which it's being founded and established. And under Idaho law, the statute sets the minimum requirements that city governments are required to abide by when creating their plan. And then it sets out some of those requirements that I touched on during my last presentation. And you'll see them included in my motion to reconsider those main factual issues. So I'm saying that the Idaho Code sets the foundation for everything, including setting up zoning.
For zoning issues.
For zoning issues. And then the city promulgates its own plan based off of those requirements. And our contention is that the city's Comprehensive Plan in the current zoning is in violation of Idaho law. And as the city attorney mentioned at the last hearing that I was at, Idaho Code takes precedence over city ordinance or planning.
Thank you for answering that question. I do remember that we talked about Idaho Code being preemptive in nature. Are so we're not going to turn this into an argument or anything like that. But are you aware of numerous Supreme, Idaho Supreme Court cases that say Comprehensive Plans are let me get the exact wording. Comprehensive Plans do not operate as legally controlling zoning law, but rather serve to guide and advise governmental agencies responsible for making zoning decisions. And there's no, well, so I'm going to stay in my lane here as an elected official, and Mr. Waddams, can you give us some citations?
Sure. Mayor, Council President, Council Members, I think what the Council President's talking about is there's a bunch of cases. Southport Cole, Bowen versus City of Lewiston, Wyden versus Canyon County Board of Commissioners, and what they all say is that as long as the decision is in accordance with the Comprehensive Plan, that's not a legal basis to strike it down, strike it down. So the issue, the Comprehensive Plan by law, it's not controlling zoning law, it's not controlling law at all. It's a vision for the future. As long as the decision's in conformance with the Comprehensive Plan, then that's not, that grants to strike it down.
Thank you. So, so, Mr. Grover, looking at your exhibits, and I identified at least one. But looking at your exhibits, how many don't rely on that argument?
All of them, because they're all based on that Idaho law preempts city code zoning requirements and ordinance. That this particular project is in violation of Idaho Code. Not just that we're relying that the city plan is being violated. We're saying that Idaho Code is also being violated. And that the reliance of the council saying, well, we currently have this zone to C2, which doesn't have a height requirement, therefore our hands as a city council are bound and we cannot deny the project. I'm saying that that's a misapplication of the law, because now you're taking city planning and city zoning and placing it above or preempting state law. So that would be my response.
Thank you. My response to that would be that I believe many of your arguments in this exhibit mischaracterize the Comprehensive Plan. And we can agree to disagree about that, but that's one thing that that you asked for questions. That's my first, my first question, and thank you for answering that.
Can I ask a question in response where you're saying it's that the plan is in conformity with the city? The city's Comprehensive Plan doesn't violate Idaho law. Can I ask a follow-up question on that, if I may?
If it's related to this project and whether we should reconsider?
It is.
Then that's proper.
Okay. Directly adjacent to this seven-story building is a set of patio homes in a community that is going to be maybe 100 to 200 feet away. These are one-story homes that have a backyard that abuts the property that is to be developed. They're residential homes. If you were to be looking for a home in Garden City, and you had an opportunity to purchase a home that had nothing behind it but an empty parking lot and the pace of perfection, or you had an opportunity to purchase a home that had a seven-story building with roof access behind it, would you choose equally between the two? Or would you prioritize one over the other?
And that is?
This goes to the continuity of the community. That if you have
I would say this, I can tell you about other properties in Garden City that are multi-story, more than two, that are directly about single-family homes and single-family and single-level businesses. Okay. So I, I believe, it is my opinion and the opinion of council members that have endorsed Zone 2 to not have height restrictions, that that's the direction our city is going. It's going up.
But that didn't answer the question. For you personally, would you prioritize one over the other, or would you say one would be more valuable?
I'm going to stop this line, because we're getting into an area where we have a clear disagreement. Does a C2 conform to a residential zone back-to-back? No, it's been in the code that way for I don't know how many decades, but, but we can have this argument back and forth all night and prosecute this here. We're not a judge for decisions made that someone doesn't like. There's someone that can navigate that. So, I think
If I may, I'll stop the argumentative
Okay.
back and forth and just make the point and move on, if I may.
Okay.
In that, in this example, what I'm trying to illustrate is that this project would have a direct impact, an adverse impact on the adjacent homes, both in their current property value and also in their resellability in the future. And I would disagree that you are not a judge, because you all sit and decide and make decisions regarding city code, city ordinance, and zoning, and approving projects such as this, that you have the opportunity to interpret city code and ordinance. And I'm asking you to take a good hard look at this project to see if in your mind's eye, it really does conform to Idaho Code, which is our differing opinion, and I can respect that. But in the opinion of my clients and most of the residents nearby that have contacted me, they would all disagree that this does not conform to Idaho Code, and that Idaho Code should preempt the city zoning.
Okay, you've made that point. Can we move on to the next one?
Any other questions? And finally, I would just like to say that I believe for something like this to be adjudicated, there should be a foundation in fact as opposed to supposition. Right now, the council has only had one traffic study, and I say that lightly, to talk about the impacts that this project would have on the local community. And I feel that that is insufficient evidence for a determination of whether this design is appropriate and does comport with Idaho law and city ordinance. And I would say that we need to reconsider this and have further information presented regarding these particular things, especially when we're talking about the adverse effect on property values of the adjacent properties, as well as the traffic study and what it's going to do to Glenwood and the surrounding area, especially with now the right-in, right-out requirement and what that's going to do to traffic patterns, and whether people are going to be flipping U-turns, clogging up the back roads and that sort of thing. So that's why I'm urging to say that there are some factual issues that probably need a little bit more expertise and less anecdotal argument back and forth between us. And that's why I'm asking for this particular decision to be reconsidered.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes. Mr. Thomas?
Mr. Mayor, Council, based on what was just presented, I think I'll just defer to what we submitted in our opposition to the reconsideration, unless there's any questions.
Are there any questions? I don't hear any. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Okay, council. It matters properly before the council. Again, the decision is to reconsider the decision you made regarding the approval of DSRFY 2023-10 on the basis of an alleged error in your decision.
Council members, I think we should have a discussion. I'd like to hear the thoughts from those of us that are present, and if we can agree on whether we should reconsider this or not. if we can agree on whether we should reconsider this or not. Someone want to go first?
I can go first. I am in favor of reconsideration. I think when I was, I voted no on this project, I felt that it didn't conform with the continuity of the neighborhood, the comprehensive plan. And I think you could argue the health and welfare and safety, you know, of, of the neighborhood and, and traffic. And I think there's, there's precedent there also at the court level where that is a consideration. And so, and I think the assistant league has a very good point that they haven't agreed or were given permission for their land or their property to be used in any way. We don't know if they have that permission or not, the Annesman or things like that. So it's almost to me like, that'd be a nice requirement to know if that is even allowed or not. I think, because if it's not, the project wouldn't be allowed to go forward anyway. Building permit would be issued if, if they don't have that permission. So that, to me, that's an important question to answer. So given where I kind of stood on the project, the first time I heard it, I would be in favor of hearing the reconsideration.
Thank you.
Council president, I guess I'll start by saying I, I, I would not support a reconsideration of this application. I appreciate council president's thoughts around the comprehensive plan. I believe the, the motion to reconsider had a lot of language that places the comprehensive plan above our code in terms of what is primarily to be considered with each application. So that's one reason. Second big reason, as I went through the motions to reconsider, is there was some language in there about compatibility of land use with a large apartment building adjacent to single family homes. And as I was reading that, I just thought, so both are residential. You know, there is, our code defines multifamily and single family. So in this zone, it is obviously a multifamily application. So that applies and is allowed in C2. And that's what this is, a multifamily. There's no height limit, of course. So if we're from a compatibility standpoint, these both, single family and multifamily, they're both residential. I think the motion to reconsider talks about it's, and I, I don't want to put words, I don't have it right, super handy, I couldn't find any motion to reconsider, but that the that we need to consider different land uses with each application and, and so forth. So there just isn't a difference in land use as defined in our code between single family and this, except that they're multifamily, but it's residential. Okay? The one thing that would, I, I just kind of quickly looked at our code. A great example of something that wouldn't be allowed in C2 is food processing. So if the application was a food processing plant, it's, that's not allowed in C2 for, for probably a lot of obvious reasons. But residential is. And then the third thing or the other thing is there was some language about intensity. Glenwood is one of the most intense streets in the valley, and this project is on Glenwood. Granted, it's also access is Marigold. That's less, quite a bit less intense than Glenwood. But I still consider this application very appropriate to be, to the area around Glenwood. So reiterating, I would not be supportive of reconsideration of this application.
For the benefit of our community members, I just want to explain the procedural position that, that we are in. The, this application is in the design review place in our procedure. When a design is approved, poof, it doesn't get built the next day, right? There's many, many steps that still have to happen before construction can begin. In the decision document, if you, if you look through that, you will see that, you'll see language that says compliant as conditioned. And those conditions sometimes can be a pretty heavy lift. When we first, when we initially looked at this application, council members, we didn't, we didn't have strong language from the assistance league about the, this fire lane that they have that's on their property. And in the packet on page thirty, we now have strong language that tells us, and I'm just going to read this sentence, Assistant Leagues of Boise has no intention. So Assistant League of Boise has no intention of consenting to allowing the apartments to use any of our property. Not now or in the future. The alley parentheses, fire lane, end of parentheses, on our northern border was built to support two small buildings. Serves as access to our dumpster, pickup by partner agencies and delivery of goods. And then, and then goes on, it goes on to characterize that alleyway. This information came as part of the motion for reconsideration, saying, hey, it's, it's, it's our intent. So we have a lack of evidence pointing to any intentions by the assistance league to share their property. And because this project has been approved as conditioned, one condition that's going to be a heavy lift is compliance with fire. Without that condition, a building code does not get issued, a building permit rather, does not get issued. So that's, and that's one step, right? We have a number of projects in Garden City that have been approved where the conditions have never been met and they never got built. That's not to say that they won't get built. But it has, those projects have to satisfy the conditions of the approval. This project, you know, in, in the minds of many, is, is not proper for the area. And others would argue that it is proper. It's, it's my opinion that we did not make errors in our review of whether this project was compliant. Now, there are conditions that have not been met, and that's a fact. Mr. Grover points out one, the assistant league cements that. That's, that's a very real thing, but we're not issuing a building permit. We're, we're considering whether or not to approve a project. And I don't think we've made an error on that. So my vote would be to not reconsider, because I don't find procedural errors.
Okay. There are ten emotion one way or another, just for the sake of the audience. If I get a motion to reconsider and it doesn't get a second, the motion dies. If I do not get a motion to, to not reconsider, then the fact that no motion is presented means reconsideration issue is denied. So if anyone on the council wishes to make a motion in the affirmative, this would be the time. Meaning, council member, if you want, if you think this should be reconsidered, then you can make that motion now and we'll see if you get a second.
Oh, listen.
Yeah.
I think part of it, I think it'd be good for Councilmember Jordan to be here, part of that, so. I move that we hear the reconsideration.
Okay, we got a motion to grant the reconsideration request. Do I have a second? Okay, the motion dies for failure to, to get a second. Are there any other motions? Okay, hearing no other motions, then the request for reconsideration of DSR FY 2023-10 is deemed denied. That concludes the action of the council on this, on this issue tonight. Council, next item on our agenda is F3. This is the Development Services Departmental Notices of Decision. It's on page fifty-nine. Let's, let's room clear for a minute. Good night, Mr. Grover.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Permission to pull the council?
Yes.
Council members, having reviewed the Development Services Notice of Decisions, do either of you have concerns that you would like to pull those decisions and review them?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, let's move to item G1.
Okay, thank you. Item G1. This is a public hearing. CPA FY 2024-5. What am I doing here, Jenna?
Mayor, thank you. And the, the application tonight is for amendments to Garden City Code Title 8, 6A, general provisions of administration, as well as 86B3, the design review process.
Okay. Counsel, we have questions of Jenna. This is a first reading request.
And Mayor, it's actually a public hearing tonight.
Oh, it's the public hearing, then we go with this reading.
Yes.
Okay.
Um.
With, with other questions before open the public hearing of Jenna? Okay, hearing done, I'll open the public hearing on CPA FY 2024-5 and ask anyone in the audience, did we get any signups? No signups locally? We have anybody online that wishes to testify regarding this item?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, is there any way Jenna could give a, a small briefing? I got lost as to what, I'm sorry, as to what this item was pertaining to?
Certainly.
Mayor, members of the council, and this particular proposed amendment to the, the code deals with administrative procedures, as well as administrative procedures regarding design review applications. The current code has a couple of items that were identified as needing, needing to be addressed. The first of which is within the design review process. The design review decisions are made by the planning official. And upon an appeal of that decision, currently code has a conflict where it's not clear whether the, it be strictly an appeal application or a de novo public hearing. The way that this is drafted would be that any objection to the planning official's decision would be an appeal. And, and the other items that were initially identified as, as needing, being suggested as where change could occur is currently Title 8 has administrative processes. But we also have resolutions that have been adopted that contain administrative procedures. And so combining those and having them make, making sure that they do not conflict and be in one location is just an efficiency for the city. When this was heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission, there were two areas where we heard some, an individual testify that they felt that as drafted, there was some subjectivity. And the first of which is the timeframes for staff to act on applications where the language was along the lines of congruent with staff loading. And the other was that it wasn't strictly tied down when the planning official could recommend a hearing. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did feel that it was clear enough and made a recommendation as that was drafted to the city council for approval. But notwithstanding, staff has made some changes, suggested some changes that could address those two items that were brought up within the testimony. And those are highlighted in the draft ordinance that's in the packet and available online. And the first way that that was addressed is now it clearly states that staff has 30 days to act on an, on an application, but can, can extend that action by one or more periods of time, periods of time that are 30 days each. And that does allow the city to have some flexibility, where we've seen in this valley that strict timeframes at times just can't be met. For example, COVID is a good example. And then the other change is that it, the planning official will no longer make a recommendation for a public hearing. But the decision will be final at the planning official level, unless there's 10 or more objections that are received. And at that point in time, the planning official shall schedule a public hearing. And so there's no question. And the reason for that is for a number of reasons, but efficiency is a good one that I'll point out. If the city were to be addressing 10 different appeals, it may be cumbersome to hear all of those appeals for the applicant, for the public. And, and certainly processing that administratively would be quite a heavy lift for the staff. And there are a couple of additional changes. Oh, and I do want to note that in those objection, objections, that there is a caveat that states for the purposes of being counted as an objection, that it's per household. And, and that, that's just to try to keep things clean. And, and certainly that household, if there were 10 individuals or one individual, they could appeal the, the, the decision of the planning official. It just wouldn't trigger that de novo public hearing. And staff did note in between the planning and zoning recommendation and making the changes that are here before you tonight, that Table 86A1, there's a conflict with 86B8 in the authorities and processes for minor planned unit development. And so that's just been reflected to follow what 86B8 says and what the city has been following. And there is a reference to Idaho statute regarding reconsideration and taking analysis, both of which are required per Idaho code. In many ways, it is repetitive since Idaho code already does require that. It's just bringing things down so staff knows where to find them. And tonight, the decision, those are, that's the end of the changes that were made. Tonight, the council's decision could be to sustain, modify, reject, or remand. that were made. Tonight, the council's decision could be to sustain, modify, reject, or remand the Planning and Zoning Commission's decision. If you do sustain and approve the ordinance tonight, staff would suggest that the first reading occur, and then there'd be two subsequent readings. That is time for questions.
Thank you, Jenna. Any any questions?
Mister Mayor.
Did I I open the public hearing?
You did, Mister Mayor.
Huh?
You did open the.
Okay, good. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
I was hoping because Hannah was, I think it was Hannah, it was your voice, Hannah, I believe.
Thank you, Mister Mayor, Jenna. Jenna, that was perfect. I don't have any further questions or public comments.
Okay, thank you.
Mister Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, sure.
Sorry, Jenna. On page eighty nine of the packet, three down near the bottom, under public testimony, it says, well, I'll just ask, is there a difference between decision maker and final decision maker? Because that paragraph has both phrases in there. So if there's a difference, then great. If there isn't, then maybe. You know what I'm saying? Yeah.
And Mayor, Councilmember Rasmussen, I'll definitely look at that. There can be a difference at time.
Okay.
Where the recommending bodies are also considered decision maker, decision makers, and I'll make sure that that reads clearly. But yes, the answer is at times they can be.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other testimony on this item? Okay, let the record reflect that I didn't get any online signs and no one else in the building here is interested in testifying. And so with that, I'll close the public hearing. And council, the action would be to approve the code text amendment, or and then subsequent to that, we go to the first reading. And this would be a three reading process, so the clarification Jenna just mentioned, we would anticipate seeing that correction or clarification come back before the second reading.
So make a motion to approve, and then it'll get read.
Yes.
Doing two motions.
Yeah, it's two. They're separate motions. We approve first, yeah.
So Mr. Mayor, I move to be approve the code text amendment. CPA FY twenty twenty four dash oh oh five.
Okay, I've got a motion.
I want a second.
A motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Kirk, call roll. Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I would like to have a just a brief discussion on this, and I realize that we're down a council member today, but I just feel like I just need to raise this and get it off my chest a little bit, but I think I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did a great job, and I do wish to sustain that. My comments were one of procedure and the implications that hearing these matters at the city council level as an appeal will limit the scope of what we can actually talk about and discuss versus de novo, which would allow us to consider all of the evidence anew, or all of the say evidence, evidence, I was going to say evidence. Project, all the elements of a project. And so in an appeal, then, you know, the appellant would say, hey, I think a mistake was made here, here, and here. Right? And and in an appeal, as a city council, we would only be able to address that piece, those those pieces where where alleged error was made. And so as I looked through this, my my struggle was I, you know, I sometimes maybe can be a little bit of a control freak, and I want to hear a little more, right? Or want to be able to comment on a little more, and that would really be improper. It would be procedurally improper to do that. In fact, it shouldn't even be raised. And and I think I I would guess that this would be worded that way, or that the Planning and Zoning Commission did this as a time-saving feature. You know, we don't want to keep having public hearings and multiple bites at an apple where we're reviewing these big lengthy packets. And and perhaps there's a staff loading issue too. I don't know. I don't know what their reasons were. But I just wanted to get that off my chest, that that's that's what we're going to be dealing with. And the impact it's going to have on me personally, I think that that's one of the most impactful things. I think I can live with that. But it's going to take great discipline to only focus on those matters raised out of appeal.
Jenna, can you come back up? I want to make sure that we're we're clear. The de novo versus non-de novo threshold in its relation to how many people are objecting to a project, I'm thinking of what we witnessed here this evening, where we had ten or more people. If we had an appeal of a decision like that, that triggers a hearing. And that hearing is held in that case non-de novo or de novo.
Mayor, Council President Page. If there the the process right now, the applicant notices the neighborhood of their intended project, and they have a neighborhood meeting, and during that neighborhood meeting, they are required to provide specific information, and that is that those who write in or object to the city then have standing to make an appeal. And so if there were to be ten or more households that the city received those letters from, then staff would schedule a de novo public hearing as it's currently drafted. If there is fewer objections than that, then it would be limited to the appeal process and would not be de novo.
I misunderstood that. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
So, Mister Mayor, so so really, is whether it's ten or more or not? So are you okay, Councilmember Page, if it be de novo, if there's ten people and non-de novo, or if it's less?
I see Jenna racing up here.
Do I understand that correctly?
And Mayor, I just also wanted to clarify that the way that this is drafted, it would maintain the ability for the council to review any project that is approved regardless of an appeal if there's significant adverse impact on those notices of decision. And so the council could still review review items even without an appeal. Thank you.
And Bill, you had a question?
Well, to me, the the ten household objections determines whether it's, if I understood right, whether it's de novo or non-de novo. Is that, did I understand?
That's my understanding now, yes, and I did, I misunderstood that.
But does that matter? Should they both be the same, I guess, is the question. Should be one or the other?
Personally, I I I think if ten members of the community are that interested, that non-de novo is proper, we should be that interested. Those, you know, those are voters that we're representing.
To be de novo.
Right, to be de novo.
De novo, okay.
That's my thought. Yeah. I.
Interesting.
Yeah.
To tell stuff.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to understand. All right, thank you.
Yeah, and I agree with with your answer to Councilmember Jacob's question.
That makes me understand your thought process of why that ten makes a difference. It makes sense.
Right.
Mister Mayor, I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Question's been called for. All in favor of approving CPA FY twenty twenty four dash five, indicate by saying. Well, I got a call rule on that call rule.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Okay, now we can move to the first reading, which is going to be ordinance ten fifty one dash twenty four. To implement what you just approved.
Mister Mayor, I move that we have the first reading of ten fifty one twenty four.
Second. By title only.
By title.
I've got a motion and a second to read ordinance ten fifty one dash twenty four by title only. Any discussion? Here now for a call roll.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
First reading ordinance ten fifty one dash twenty four, in ordinance of the City of Garden City Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section two Duties and Authority Amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section three General Application Process, repealing Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section five Administrative Process with Notice Repealing Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section six Administrative Process Without Notice Amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section seven Public Hearing Process Amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article B Specific Provisions, Section three Design Review repealing all ordinances or part thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, providing for severability clause approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. In parentheses, page sixty nine. Okay, next item on our agenda, item G three. This is the second reading of ordinance ten forty five dash twenty four. For the benefit of those that have joined us online, have we seen any changes from the first reading?
And Mayor members of the council, there are two relatively small changes from the first reading. They were noted at the first reading where the city attorney had indicated there were two words that he wasn't overly behind, and those words were vested and that the application would be vested should certain things occur and that good cause could be, and the word was evoked by, and it gave how that could be triggered. The changes that staff has penciled in there for your review tonight are instead of the word vested, to use the word secured, and I understand the city attorney to be okay with that word. And instead of saying that a good cause can be evoked, it says good cause includes and then has the list, and he has also given the thumbs up on that.
Put up the source of it.
Working his thumbs. Okay, any any questions, council? Okay, the matter before us is the second reading of ordinance ten forty five dash twenty four by title only, if you so choose to do that.
Mister Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we have the second reading of ordinance ten forty five dash twenty four by title only.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Second reading ordinance ten forty five dash twenty four, and ordinance of the City of Garden City Municipal Corporation of the State of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter six Administration Article A General Provisions, Section eight Expiration of Approvals Amending Garden City Code Title eight Development Code Chapter seven References Article A Definition, Section two Definition of Terms repealing all ordinances or part thereof to the extent they conflict with this ordinance, providing all other ordinances included in the official code are still in effect, notwithstanding some provisions thereof being eliminated, providing for a severability clause approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Thank you. Move on to item G four. This is a resolution, Resolution eleven thirty eight dash twenty four approving animal sheltering agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty five. That's our agreement with the Idaho Humane Society. The Chief Stanbaugh has essentially negotiated some minor changes in that. Chief? Maybe clarifications, maybe I'm conflating it with another issue.
The biggest change is there's a possibility that if we need them to, they can come pick the animal up from the the our kennel, it would just be for a charge, and so a hundred dollars per trip. So we don't plan on using that, but if there was an emergency and we had to.
The budget's the same.
Pardon me?
Budget's the same.
But no, we had an increase of
Twenty seven percent.
Yeah. Yeah. But the programs worked out, I think, well for us, and the Garden City Community Cats Project, I was pretty thrilled with it. They the Humane Society took in, I can't remember how many hundred cats.
Two hundred and forty six cats, I believe.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, a couple of ducks, a rabbit.
Yeah, but you know, that'll work off that initial surge. So that's all working out pretty well, and
Well, I can.
Yes, I feel safe walking down the street now.
I just like to say thank you again. I know you've worked really hard on on coming up with an amended contract or, you know, a contract that would accommodate our need, and do you think it was a need?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And the Humane Society, I mean, they 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 did agree to a hybrid contract. There's not another one like ours. So it it worked out well, and it's because of our unique circumstances, and they recognize that. So kudos to them for that. So anyway, thank you, chief.
Mister Mayor?
Yes.
I move to approve Resolution one one eight three dash two four proving an animal sheltering agreement for fiscal year twenty twenty five between the Humane Society of Garden City. Second that.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here now the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Item G five, Resolution eleven eighty four dash twenty four. This is for Charlie's office at the courthouse. It's that, or he has to sit in the car with it running and work out of the out of that old beater he drives.
Mister Mayor, I move to reapprove Resolution eleven eighty four twenty four for the renewal of the lease that they kind of cleared us.
Have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here now for call roll, please.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Item G six, this is another second reading. This is for ordinance ten forty two dash twenty four. Jenna, do we have any changes to this one?
That was mine, Mister Mayor.
Okay, Charles, do we have any changes to this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so if I can go over those.
Yes.
Mister Mayor, Mayor members of the council, I'm going to do a share screen here in a minute. Before I get to the share screen, I'll just summarize my memorandum. It starts on page one twenty nine of your packet. What I did is I had a memorandum from the previous council meeting. I just added to that memorandum to reflect some changes. So I'm starting on page one twenty nine. I put in the memorandum, the conversation from the last council meeting that the council did not want an administrative process for these types of violations, that just wanted them to be transferred directly to the traffic court. And so I made that change, and I'll show you that in a minute. Then the other thing is we did do some public outreach. We reached out to the Kennesaw Highway District Transportation Department, and it was to public. And we could see some responses from them. In your packet, there's an email specific to the Idaho Walk Bike Alliance. That's on page one thirty four of your packet.
Can I can I stop you just a second? For those that are online, what we're talking about is an effort for those that have jurisdictions that have a green belt running through, that we have some common basic rules that control the green belt, and Mister Waddums is explaining some issues that won't affect that, but will affect our how we process some things internally. So I'm sorry, Mister Waddums, I just I'm not sure everybody knew what we were talking about.
I should have started with that. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
Yeah.
So there's some emails attached to my memorandums, pages one thirty four up through page one forty five. That's some of the correspondence that we received with the Idaho Bike Alliance and some other members. There's a Mister Brown who was interested, Mister Gigra. Mr. Brown who was interested, uh, Mr. Gigra, he's the president of the Foundation for the Eighty Canyon Trail System Incorporated, that is on, starting on page one forty. And so, uh, the staff has been trying to reach out to the public and interested parties to make sure everybody can be heard on this. Uh, we get here back from the Highway District, uh, this afternoon, they have some changes, they'd like, just a couple of changes they'd like to see to definitions. And so if we, uh, we get a third reading, I will make those changes. Eighty County Highway District's only comments where they wanted the definitions to be, uh, uh, compliant with the ADA and the proposed right-of-way accessibility guidelines. And so that will be an easy fix, and so if the council directs me to do that, I will do that for the third reading. Getting into the specifics, then I'm gonna try to do a share screen for people that are watching at home. I just thought it'd be helpful if I go over some of the changes. So you can see on the title of the ordinance and this is, um, references on page one forty-six of your packet. Uh, the things that are in red are the, some of the changes that were made from now from the first reading, so you can see on the title of the ordinance, uh, the council, uh, we referenced it at the first reading that were, uh, the preferences not to have licenses for scooters, so I took that provision out. Uh, the, the direction from the council at the first reading was that there's not gonna be an administrative process for people to violate, uh, commit violations of the green belt, I should just go to traffic court. And so I made that change to the title and in the substance. And I wanted to point that out now. Uh, going to this, uh, the definitions, you can see we took out the definitions again that are, are not relevant based on the council's direction from the first reading. So that is stricken, and that's in red for convenience. The definitions, uh, you can see, uh, we're trying to make the definitions consistent with the Idaho code, and I think just being consistent with the Idaho code is uh, appropriate in this case, and so we're just, uh, this red here is just trying to make the definition consistent with the Idaho code. That's on page one forty-eight of the packet. Um, I do make a notation on page one forty-nine of the packet that, uh, for the definition of electronic personal assisted mobility devices, we're just gonna cut and paste the definition from Idaho code forty-nine dash one oh six. Again, that's to be consistent with code, but out of the Idaho code. This provision five nine two, starting on page one forty-nine of your packet, um, we just specified that not all traffic laws are gonna apply to e-bikes and scooters, only certain traffic laws are gonna apply to e-bikes and scooters. So that's a cleanup for the second reading. Right here, I did, uh, wanted to bring this to the council's attention, it's on the one fifty of your packet. Uh, and it's, a lot of this was a cut and paste to be honest and frank, uh, with the council from the Boise City Code. Uh, Boise City Code, I think, was probably the first jurisdiction in the state to attempt to regulate, uh, e-bikes and e-scooters, and so rather than reinvent the wheel, we left it the Boise City Code. And then we tried to, uh, make the adjustments needed regarding the city, so the Boise City Code said that, you know, uh, you need a reflector at nighttime. Me putting on my litigator hat, I think people could argue about what nighttime means, and so we changed it just from dusk to dawn. So it's clear when you need a red reflector, hopefully that's consistent with the rest of the code. And if it's not, Chief Stanbaugh will tell me and I can get that fixed for the third reading, but I didn't want to bring that to your attention. There's just some stuff that, um, that was taken out to clean up, clean up. Uh, and you can see that additions again are in red. There's right here, uh, on page one fifty-two of your packet. To page one fifty-two of the packet, because this is something I wanted to bring to the council's attention. Uh, one fifty-two of the packet where it talks about riding upon sidewalks and upon, uh, anything crosswalks, and we're gonna include the green belt to that. And it's, and, and the question I have, uh, for the council really is, uh, I was thinking about our dismount zone. Uh, it's apparently on part, uh, at least one portion of our green belt, there is a dismount zone that says you keep, you gotta dismount your bicycle and you gotta walk through. Uh, the question is for the council, do you want that to apply to e-bikes and scooters and everything else, everybody has to dismount? Or whether that always applicable to pedal propulsion bicycles, and so the way that red right there says that, there, you know, you might have to dismount on, uh, uh, if, if you have, um, official traffic control devices, you're gonna have to get off if it's on a sidewalk, on a crosswalk or, and I added it in the green belt, because I was thinking again specifically about the dismount zone, but if the council has any specific direction on that, I could get that cleaned up for the third reading. Yes, council president.
Sorry, Mr. Walmsley?
Yes.
Um, Mr. President? Have a provision made in there, um, on that, on that issue about dismount? That that's, that's not gonna be required if, if the, if the person's unable to dismount. Right, so we have, uh, people that might be in a mobility device that don't have any support.
Oh, yes, that mayor, council, or president, yes, I can make sure that that doesn't apply for, uh, any family.
Mr. Waddums to clarify, so great point, Councilmember Page on the so right now does it read that regardless of whether you're on a scooter or e-bike or bike, you have to dismount, so it's all for fall, is that are you asking us, we should have that, or is that what you added?
Mayor, Councilmember Jacobs, uh, the, the proposal right now is that, um, if there is an official traffic control device that you have to get off, you have to dismount.
Regardless of the device?
Well, and I, I think the, um, the intent is to be compliant with the ADA, so if it's an ADA device, you know, that would be a violation.
If I'm on a scooter, I need to get off.
Right, and I can, to Council President Page's point, I will clarify that for the third reading, if that's what the council would like to do, but uh, adding the green belt to that, uh, and regarding the official traffic control devices, uh, that was, my thought was specifically the dismount zone.
Uh, we, we may wanna, we may wanna think about that a little, because I've dealt with ADA, uh, on that, it's really it's a, it's a, it's a trail. And we call it, it's part of our green belt system. But it's atypical to the green belt uh, as commonly referenced. Um, it's, it's, uh, not designed for mobility for, for devices that provide mobility to disabled people. The surface is wrong, you know, you're, it's, it's a trail, it's it's really in a category that would be more consistent with, uh, unpaved pedestrian trails in the foothills or somewhere. So I wanna be a little careful about just categorically lumping that in with the, the paved path that is essentially functions as a transportation corridor. So I'm not sure how to, how to, almost said something that would have made Donna Brown mad. Uh, I'm not exactly sure how to, uh, to address that, but that uh, the walking path, uh, I think, uh, what, we need to segregate that?
The nature path?
Nature path, yeah. Because it is, it is not, it could not become ADA compliant if we wanna put it, if it's designated with the rest of the green belt. Without spending literally millions of dollars, uh, to bring it up to a different standard, it's not it's a, it's a walking, it's a walking trail. Uh, drive by there constantly, I, you just, you don't see bicycles even being walked through, it's just narrow bridges, we got uh, a couple of spots, we have a grade that's probably not ADA compliant, we've got loose gravel, we've got tree roots in some areas that so it's just not we need to look at that, Charlie, I didn't, I didn't think about that, I'm really glad you brought it up.
Yeah, I flagged it, I flagged it for the second reading, and I don't need an answer now, but hopefully there's an answer for the third reading.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll work, work with you on that.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, so moving along with the, uh, other changes. Because there is, there are a couple of items that I'm gonna ask for decisions on. Uh, you can go through here, and a lot of this is probably pretty self-explanatory. Tried to clean it up, but did talk to Ms. Libby, um, now we're on page, uh, we get there. Page one fifty-three and one fifty-four of your packet talks about getting a license through the city clerk for group events. Um, that's what Boise does, uh, I asked Lisa or Ms. Libby or clerk treasurer if there is some kind of a permit or for group events. And I thought I heard you know, but, uh, that's something, uh, you know, do we want to include that in there? Uh, legal would, uh, refer to whatever the clerk treasurer thinks. But, um, right now it's currently stricken, if, if we're gonna have a race parade or some other group event with bicycles, e-bikes and scooters, uh, do we want them to get a permit?
We do currently have groups that pull permits for races on the green belt.
Okay, so is that a provision that we should keep in? Chief Stanbaugh saying yes?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, please, we just, because we have these races that come in that have a lot of people on them, we need to know about it, need to make sure they're providing the appropriate for lack of better terms, traffic control, pedestrian control, so that we don't have a test and get injured by someone who didn't know they were gonna be there.
So it's stricken out, what I would recommend is that I unstrike it and keep it in for the third reading. Um, so that'd be my recommendation on that, following, uh, Chief Stanbaugh on that. Uh, going to page one fifty-four, again, we just took out the stuff regarding licensing of e-bikes and scooters. Uh, you know, Boise City has a whole section on how you license e-bikes and scooters and so on and so forth. I heard from this council that Garden City was not interested in that licensing, uh, provision, so I took it out. Right here on page ten or page one fifty-five in your packet, we take out the whole, uh, process, the administrative process, where if somebody wants a contested ticket, they can come to the city, city hall and contest it administratively first. Again, the direction I heard is that, you know, just take it to a judge and you can, you can argue the case to judge, so I took that provision out. Um, I do wanna talk briefly about five nine twenty-two, it's on page one fifty-six of your packet. Get there. Because I brought it up at the last meeting, but it's, uh, what do we want these things punishable by, and right now I'm talking about all infractions, uh, for e-bikes and scooters. Five nine twenty-two, uh, I think legal's recommendation right now, and it's based in part on the Green Belt Committee, I've mentioned the Green Belt Committee with the committee with law enforcement. Uh, I think the recommendation is that these infractions should be a fixed penalty of a hundred dollars plus court costs. Um, and so I think that, um, uh, the recommendation is we specify that these infractions are a hundred dollars plus court costs, and so that would be referenced by nine twenty-two of the council is fine, agreeable to a hundred dollars plus court costs.
Mr. Waddums?
Yes, council president, mayor council president.
Let's talk about that for just a bit.
Sure.
Um, and I, I realize that there would be civil remedies available to anyone outside of Garden City's, uh, code here. What are your thoughts about uh, differentiating, um, a penalty, an infraction, uh, uh, where an injury doesn't occur to an infraction that, or to a violation where an injury does occur? And if it's a gross injury, um, raising that to misdemeanor, I'm just thinking about, um, uh, restitution provisions.
Mayor, council president, that's, that's the way it's written, and I'm gonna get to that in a minute, but we do have a misdemeanor provision if, if there's, uh, injury to person or property that could be bumped up to a misdemeanor. And I think it's important for everybody listening to understand why, um, there's a, there's a concept, there's a legal concept called restitution, uh, and that's make a victim whole, if they have out-of-pocket expenses for medical bills, property damage, anything like that. You can get restitution, the prosecutor on that particular case could get restitution. The law is you can get restitution on misdemeanors, but not infractions. And so that's why the committee thought that if somebody gets hurt at the bike gets banged up, uh, the prosecutor should have the discretion, the law enforcement on the front end, it should have discretion to write that's either a fraction or a misdemeanor, prosecutor could keep it as a misdemeanor if there are out-of-pocket expenses for the victim. And so the specific reason for that is so we could pursue restitution in that criminal case, and so yes, that, I'll get to it in a minute, but there is a infraction provision, and there's also a misdemeanor provision.
Thank you.
So in the field, chief? Uh, does the officer have to make that decision at the time a citation is written?
The, my guidance to the, our team would be if there's any question, they will write a report and we'll route it to the prosecutor and let them review it, and then they'd make the final charging decision whether it would be summons as an infraction or a misdemeanor.
Okay.
Because some of the time when the injuries appear really bad, but when you get, by the time you get to the hospital or urgent care, they might not rise to that level where it would be a misdemeanor, so we can always hold off, get more information and then route it later, we don't have to do it right at the time, sir.
Okay, that answered my question, I was
So is the council okay with, uh, just talking about infractions, now misdemeanors are punishable by up to jail and probation and stuff like that, but just for the infraction, is the council okay with the recommendation of a hundred dollars plus court costs? It can go up to three hundred, uh, speeding tickets, we're trying to make it, you know, uh, have some parity with other types of moving violations. Speeding ticket, I think, I haven't prosecuted a speeding ticket in years, but it's seventy-five bucks or something, chief?
Speeding tickets for, um, if you're doing under fifteen, fifteen miles an hour, one or to fifteen miles an hour, the speed limits, and I think it's ninety dollars plus court costs.
Right, so, so that's why we thought the committee thought a hundred dollars plus court costs would probably be good, but the council could go up to three hundred dollars plus court costs, but I think that the committee's recommending to all their elects that a hundred dollars plus court costs would be appropriate.
So that's consistent across jurisdictions?
Yeah, we're, we're trying to keep everything consistent.
Is that what Boise's doing in eighty county?
We're, we're kinda like the tip of the spear on this, uh, mayor, council members Jacobs, we're, we're ahead of the other jurisdictions, and so when I get the, when I get to the end of my presentation, I'm gonna ask them to continue the third reading for the dates.
So if that's the committee recommendation, that, that was more
My understanding is that's the committee recommendation, and so, uh, there's another committee recommendation that I need to make the council aware of, and if it's bad. My, for a bit of time. Uh, one thing I didn't wanna point out though is that, so, um, starting on page one fifty-seven of your packet, you're gonna see some text that's in red, and so what that text, why that's red right now, and some of it's stricken out and some of it's not, but those are provisions that I've asked Colin Schmidt, the Public Works Director, if we really need those things in our park provisions. Um, I've heard back from Mr. Schmidt, uh, we're gonna, some of the stuff in red for the third reading, we're gonna take out. And some of them we're gonna keep in, and that's just gonna be based on recommendations from Public Works, so some of these things, um, you know, I asked Mr. Schmidt if he's ever used any of these provisions for parks, and some of them, he said yes, and so what we said, no. So this is part of the overall cleanup for the code, so I'll have that all cleaned up for the third reading. And the main thing that I need to give instruction from the council is the scope of the green belt provision, so I'm gonna go to page one sixty-two of your packet. Ask a question, and I'm gonna give a recommendation as well. So that's page seventeen or one sixty-two of the packet. Okay, this is the, uh, we'll get there. So this is, uh, this is based on the recommendation from your Green Belt Committee, and that, again, for everybody that's listening, that's, um, law enforcement in all of eighty county. And to remind everybody, the, the goal of law enforcement was to have one consistent law on the green belt from the two C line to Lucky Peak. Regardless of whatever jurisdiction you're in, you could be an unincorporated, you could be in Boise, whatever, uh, we want, we're hoping to have a consistent law, the consistent penalty. The first reading, um, as you might recall, the first reading this was presented to the council as any vehicle, uh, any vehicle could be in violation, um, if, if they travel at a speed greater than or in manner that it's not reasonable and prudent under the conditions of having regard to actual and potential hazards then existing. Violations of this provision is a misdemeanor, however, if the travel endangers or is likely to endanger any person or property, then violation is a misdemeanor. I, I just mentioned that earlier, this is the wording that's coming from your committee, this is the wording that the committee's recommending. What I need to clarify though?
Just to make a quick, um, correction for the record, uh, last, the last sentence in that paragraph, um, I, I believe that reads violation of this provision is an infraction. However, if so, travel and danger is likely to endanger any other person, then violation is a misdemeanor.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes, uh, mayor, council president, Paige, that is correct. Uh, the committee, I, I've heard back from the committee, though, the committee is recommending to all the agencies that this apply not just to vehicles, but to all, to any person, that could be a, a runner, it could be, um, so you don't have to be a vehicle, and so I have actually changed my recommendation from the first reading to this reading, that this, this provision right here covers any person and not just any vehicle. And so that's a change in the recommendation that's based on the committee, I think that's appropriate, I'm hoping Chief Stanbaugh agrees with that.
Absolutely, because as we stated before, two or three years ago, we put some just plain clothes detectives out, t-shirts and shorts during the fair to watch the green belt. It's just a small percentage of any given demographic, bicyclist, e-bicyclist, one-wheels, runners, walkers. People with dogs, people with kids that cause the problems. And so it may not be the e-bike. Fault that's the problem. That, that was kind of the genesis of all this, was people were complaining about e-bikes. And yeah, they are a problem, but so are people who. Train on the green belt. Things like that. So it could be as simple as some of these. Entrances to the main green belt, a pedestrian walks out in front of the bicycles, bicycles has the right way to cause a crash, and the bicycles get hurt.
They should probably also, if there's a misdemeanor citation and there's restitution needed for the bicyclist sometimes, that should, this, this is a fair application.
So that's, that's the recommended change. On page one sixty-five, I did want to bring this up because a lot of it, this is a pretty heavy lift. This ordinance is a, a fairly significant lift. It's a rewrite on some provisions of the park code. And one of it, one of those is on page one sixty-five or page twenty, and I just want to make a record of it so the council, make sure the council's aware. Law enforcement, Public Works, legal, we've all kind of been talking about. We get to it. Noise on the green belt. And, you know, we've got all this new development around the green belt. What do we do about noise complaints on the green belt? And so the, the recommendation right now is on, on section seven regarding sound. It currently says. You should not be having any kind of sound or somebody could hear that sixty-two decibels. I think that Chief Stanbauer will tell you that the police department don't have decibel readers in their back pocket or in the trunk, giving them a go around checking decibels and stuff like that. I think that's what they. So what we're changing is to, the recommendation is in such a manner that it's sound, that it's plainly audible from twenty feet. I think it's easier to figure out if it's audible from twenty feet, easier to figure out if it's above sixty-two decibels. And so I don't know if the council wants a conversation on that, but that's the recommendation.
Mr. Waters. So I, so just one question. So I, I mean, I live on the green belt, right? So I hear people with their little JBL boomboxes on their bike, can hear them coming from a mile away. And I imagine that's what that's. Does this also potentially conflict with? The boardwalk having an event where you can hear their stuff? And because we, they, we set a separate thing condition for them, if I recall. That they couldn't do anything after ten o'clock or whatever, right? But I'm clearly if they have a band or music. To me, that wouldn't be applicable as much as a guy riding nose by a player in JBL as he cruises miles down the green belt. So. Is there differentiation there?
Well, Mayor Councilmember Jacobs, the way it's written is there isn't. And so that's why I'm, I'm glad to. Write it any way the council wants, but this would be applicable to, you know, Tree Fort. If there's a, Tree Fort's doing something, we've had live music. We've had noise complaints in the past. It's just in terms of the policy decision. We don't really know how to deal with it currently. And so we could, we could deal with this later, or we could try to deal with it now, but I did whatever it is to the council.
Would that supersede agreements already made with like the board?
It would be, Mayor Councilmember Jacobs, it would be consistent with the boardwalk. I mean, the board, we have an agreement with the boardwalk. I can't remember if that's in a development agreement or something, but we do have an agreement with the boardwalk. So we would. Make sure that they're consistent with each other.
Mr. Waters. Is it overly simplified to? To card, card out an exception for those events that are permitted?
Yeah. Yes, that's, I can, Mayor Council President Page, I can write it anywhere you'd be directed to. Just having a card out for things that are permitted.
Chief, how do we deal with noise right now? I mean, is it just something that? Twenty feet. I mean, if you got good hearing, I mean, a normal conversation, you can.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we don't have a set. I mean, this is parks. So the way I read this, it doesn't affect the boardwalk. It's the green belt. The boardwalk's not part of the green belt. They're adjacent to the green belt, but it would be no different than. For example, where Councilmember Jacobs lives, he has something in his backyard, just because he's adjacent to the green belt, he's not using the green belt. This would be for the people who do, are using the green belt for training or, or travel or whatever, and they have. Radios on. Those are some of the.
Talking on the phone.
Yeah. I don't know if this, I haven't. I don't know if this is consistent with other.
District agencies or. Meridian.
Yeah. I just know twenty feet's not very far. I mean.
So, yes.
Wendy, can you?
I would, you know, for the third reading, I will take whatever the council instruction to do, and I would put that in there. I would, I put a lot of weight in what the police department and Chief Stanbauer recommends in that regard. And I would make whatever change for the third reading.
Yeah, it's gotta be for twenty feet.
That's a.
I don't know.
It's a cut and paste from Meridian Code. So that's what it says in Meridian.
Yeah, Mr. Waters, Mr. Mayor, Council, I don't know if we can just. Look at the state code for distributing the piece and just go to that. Like, do we have to have anything separate? I know from my experience in my other agency, there was noise from a car and that was fifty feet away became, but that was a city code specific. And then from a residence, it was just another distance. And I'm sorry to recall, but. Yeah, I, twenty feet's pretty.
Yeah. I can't always hear something at twenty feet, but most people with normal hearing.
We could, we could save the discussion for the third reading or to some of you guys to be thinking about now or whatever the mayor council would like. Yeah, I have some thoughts on that. Maybe, maybe the council directs me to get with the, the chief stand while we'll get it all figured out.
I think especially with. With the distinction that chief gave, I think it's excellent. I hadn't thought about that. You know, are you using the green belt? If you're not, make the noise you want. Unless it's disturbing the peace.
Yeah.
Just something.
That's what I'm hearing.
Perhaps it's just something from the back, but you know, we will, I, I would assume that we will continue to get noise complaints from time to time as we grow. And so we have to deal with it.
Every time there's a Hawks game.
Okay, I'm glad I brought it up to make sure it wasn't lost in the shuffle. So those are the points, the taken with the changes, the main changes from the first reading are. Fixed infraction of a hundred dollars plus court costs. And the regulation for the green belt should apply to everybody, not just people. So if that makes any further questions.
Just a comment, Mr. Waters, great work. I know that this reaches across so many people and touched this and so many other agencies and. Just, just really, it's robust, it's well thought out.
Okay, the man before us is the second reading of ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four.
Second.
A motion and a second, a discussion on the motion. Your non-the clerk call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs? Charlie, just a point of clarification. Would you like me to read the new title as you have it, as you presented?
Please, yes.
Second reading of ordinance. Ten forty-two dash twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of Garden City, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, amending Garden City Code Title V. Traffic to add chapter nine, bicycles, e-bikes and scooters. Section one definition, section two, certain traffic laws applying. To persons riding bicycles, e-bikes and e-scooters. Section three, required equipment. Section four, riding on bicycles, e-bikes or e-scooters. Section five, clinging. To motor vehicles. Section six, riding on roadways. Section seven, using provided bike lanes and bike paths. Section eight, riding upon sidewalks and upon within. Upon and within crosswalks. Section nine, passing other vehicles. Section ten, dismount not required when stopping. Section eleven, turn signals. Section twelve, riding in groups. Section thirteen, bicycle, e-bike and or scooter. E-scooter parking. Section fourteen, use of bike paths and bike lanes by other non-motorized modes of transportation. Section fifteen, group events. Section sixteen, unlawful use of bike lanes. And bike paths. Section seventeen, reckless or inattentive operation. Section eighteen, defacing public or private property. Section nineteen, basic rule and maximum posted speed limits. Section twenty-one, Idaho uniform citation for violation. Section twenty-two penalties. Section twenty-six, removal of abandoned or obstructed by bicycles, e-bikes, e-scooters or any part thereof from public places and amending Title X, public parks, amending. Chapter one parks and waterways rules and regulations. Section one definition, section two prohibited acts relating to park property. Section three, traffic. Section four, recreational activities. Section five, behavior and amending the language. To include provision for e-bikes and e-scooters, amending language to clarify prohibited acts and penalties, providing severability, repealing conflicting city code provisions, approving a summary of the ordinance and providing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I, I move for a third reading to a date certain December nine, twenty twenty-four. Of ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four.
Okay.
What was the date, I'm sorry?
December ninth.
I'll hopefully give a chance, a chance for the other jurisdictions to catch up.
Yeah, second. Got a motion and second to schedule the third reading for ordinance ten forty-two dash twenty-four to December nine, twenty twenty-four. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none for call roll.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs? Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Okay. We have an update and a question from legal that we need to do an executive session regarding Applebee's. And we don't have a section. State code section in, on the agenda, so. At least online. You have it in red?
Yes.
Okay, would you, would you make the motion then? I didn't have it on mine.
In accordance with Idaho Code seventy-four two oh six. Want to have to communicate with legal counsel and the public agent to discuss legal implications and the legal options for pending litigation. Controversies not yet being litigated. But immediately likely to be litigated afterward, regular council meeting will be, will reconvene for potential actions.
Okay, got a motion and a second.
Thank you, Andy.
I'll second that.
They've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Councilmember Jacobs?
Yes.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
I need to wait for the, this is recording.
It's back recording.
Okay. Call the meeting back to order at seven fifty-one. Pleasure the council.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move to authorize the mayor. To come to an agreement. Together with the city attorney on the Applebee's matter. Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, the court call roll.
Councilmember Page?
Yes.
Councilmember Rasmussen?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacobs?
Very good. Thank you. That concludes the business on our agenda tonight. Entertaining motion to adjourn. May I have a second?
Yep, second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.